Yes, well, welcome to everybody to our March Menus and Communications Committee meeting today, Wednesday, the 8th of March. First item in the agenda is 70522, declarations of any discloseable junior interests. And noted, thank you. We do have the chance to bring them forward if a relevant item occurs. 70622, apologies for absence, please Karen.
This has been received from the council's Prime, Crawford, Jeremy and Parker.
Okay. 70722 is the minutes of the meeting held on the 8th of February, which were received by full council on the 28th. Here with the full councilman. Are we happy for those three signs of true record? Thank you. Not much, Mike. That's just, so 70822, financial report update. So please start.
Okay, so I think the financial report as usual by Alan has been circulated prior to the meeting. Not much in terms of the main areas to consider has changed overly. As we discussed last month, the biggest impact to the expenditure part of our budget is the maintenance repairs. But as Alan states in his comments, that's mainly because we had a lot of statutory compliance work to be done. So hopefully it's just one off this year or certainly one off for the next three to five years, depending on what we're looking at. Going back to the income again, February, so we're right up to date. February was actually our best performing bar income of the year, which is really encouraging. Usually it's, it's sort of March, which you take in the civic balls and such, and also Christmas. But this was by far and away the best month so far this year. So it looks, well, we are certainly well above our budget forecast for this year. But it's looking reasonably good. We've got some good events for the final month of the year. So we should, we should really hit home in terms of our bar income, which is good because it compensates for the work that we've done on the expenditure side with maintenance and repairs. So I think as you can see on the final slide, say that extra expenditure, which we didn't force this, put together the forecast budget, we have actually performed pretty well, pretty well to the budget overall. So any questions on anything?
Question. Just on the, you said February's been the best month from up on, is that because we had a number of events or is it one particular or smaller event?
So so we had several sort of big ticket events in terms of parties and such like. So for instance, January, pretty much January is the pantomime. We take a week or so to get back into the swing of things after our break. Then we go into pantomime, which is over two weeks. The first week is really set up. So we don't really generate too much bar income. But in terms of February, we had a very big party stroke charity night for a local resident, Tom McGill, early on, which set us up quite nicely because that hits a gross income of 400 shy of our monthly target. So we were well underway within the first week. And then we had a Fleetwood Mac tribute, which was pretty good. We had a private party, which again was just under our monthly target in one bar. We had a George Harrison tribute, which actually was very well attended, which again generated a reasonable bar income. But then we had some other ones like the mayor's quiz, the wrestling and our week to week sessions with Sir Rock, which are now starting to pick up a little momentum after a long return, slow return from Covid. But they are now doing a lot better. So this month we have a big esports event over the weekend. We have Legends of Motown. We have a medium which is generating a lot of interest. It's an international medium called Tony Stockwell. And again, the tickets are going really well. So I think probably by the end of the year, we should certainly really generate probably 50% more than what our anticipated forecast for the whole year. Currently we're about 16,500 above a £32,000 budget. So we're, we're, we're running at that kind of level already at the moment. And the good thing is we've slightly tweaked our prices for the bar. So as Alan pointed out in previous months, we were slightly down on the net profit, but that's now gone back up to 50%. So 50% is really good. 60 is even better, which is we've operated before, but we're going to get there. So, but, but as I said, any, any questions?
Thank you. Just want to follow that up really. I wonder what proportion of the wonderful effect for the bar is, is, is profit? 30% or?
No, it's currently running at a net of 50. So yeah, so if you look at the, if you look at the bar purchases, you can see it's pretty much.
Yeah. Yeah. They don't list staffing separately, so that has to be.
We don't list staffing separately, simply because there is some additional costs. There is some extra bar sessional staff, but that's very minimal because we usually cover staffing of the bar with, with full time staff. So there's no real additional extras, not to a great degree anyway, open above our, our current staffing roster.
I, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I, I think it does give you a better impression if you know how many hours of work and roughly the sort of pay you're getting. It's a bit, I don't feel I'm getting the full picture if you, if, if it's just a matter of the stat, that the, 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 the full time staff or the regular staff covered.
So I, so if I
The rounds can't be spent, can they?
No. So if you give you a very broad brush example, the charity event that I spoke about grossed 2,600. So if you take 50% of that, that's 1,300. It was staffed by one full time member star and two sessionals. Those sessionals worked seven hours each. They're roughly paid about £80 per bar event for that kind of length of time. So that's £160 off something that's netting 1,300 quid. So sessional pay for additional staff is, is not a massive expenditure, but you're right, you should take it into consideration. But I think, you know, when you get into the realms of those kind of income generating bar events, then, and we don't use sessionals unless they're those kind of events. Sir Rock, for instance, is always covered by full time staff. Some of the other events, the smaller events are usually covered by full time staff. It's only when we get into the big events that are going to run with 150, 160. And in that case, 190 people who attended that event.
Thank you. Congratulations on bringing the money in. Thanks. Got no further questions then. We'll move on to 70922, approval of projects budget.
So I'm not sure, I hope Alan sent this round with the other financial report. But what I've done is I've quickly just taken out from his wider report of all the areas of the town council business to what's on the screen. So this is, this is what's pertinent to the V and C committee. So basically what Alan is trying to get your approval on is these are the areas that he's looked at. These are the areas that have already got some budget attached to it. So the NHL Guildhall project has still got six and a half thousand pounds in the budget and he's put aside another £3,000. There's an additional, additional budget of £80,000 been set for next year to tackle some of the work around, the emergency work around the Guildhall Towers. We do have to look at an alternative heating system for the Guildhall, partly because heating oil will be phased out over the next few years. But also it's a very old and antiquated system in any event. And we've already had one breakdown early part of this year and we've patched it up and tried to keep it going until the summer. But we do need to look at that and that's something we'll be discussing with the relevant authorities in terms of their advice, et cetera. But we've allocated £50,000 to look into that. There's £46,000 that's been set aside for the green projects that we've as a council already looked to. We have a small amount of money still within the marketplace improvements, although the MTI Money from Breckley District Council of £30,000 would also be added into that to further improve some of the elements of safeguarding or making safe and presentable the market square. The master plan again is something that we've already allocated money to, but Alan's set aside another £10,000. The question he's asking you is, do you agree with those? And also is there anything that we're missing out or he's missing out that we need to look at for 2023, 2024?
Yeah, can I just go back to the Guildhall heating?
Yeah.
You put in 50 odd away.
Yeah.
That's just for it to be looked at the investigations, is it?
Well, that's partly. It's also probably somebody that we would contribute to because if we were looking into things like that, it's something that we'd come back to with a wider picture to the council about public loans. Because it's something that we do have to look at as a council to revise our energy.
I just think the money needs to be going in there year on year.
Yeah, but this is for 2023, 2024. So that's a good start. If you think about the air sourced system that we had in the Carnegie, that was £48,000 a few years ago. So if you were looking at something similar, not just heating, but air conditioning. But then again, the Guildhall is a grade two listed building. So maybe we'd have to look at a different kind of heating system anyway. But we will, we've got a meeting with English Heritage. So we're going to take some of their advice as to how other relevant buildings such as a Guildhall have been developed and improved in other areas of the country. But this is a start. I think that we put that money aside because it's something that's inevitable. We've got to change it.
Are we right to just put a notional 50 when we've got, if it's going to come out at 100, then we're going to have to address that extra 50 again or?
But I think there's some grants Stuart that allow grade listed buildings to improve them and make them more sustainable. So I think 50 is a good start because if we can match fund that, then we back into the realms of that kind of money.
I just don't want to speak. Any other comments, please? So are we happy to support those project budgets that we've had to put forward? And allow Alan to put those into the budget?
Yeah.
I'll agree.
Yes. All three, thank you. On to 71022, marketing report.
Okay, right. So this should have been sent around to everybody this week, I think. So in terms of marketing, kind of the same as, as normal in terms of our Facebook, Instagram, Twitter posting. We're obviously just continuing with that. The town council news section of the website is updated and so are the Carnegie and Guildhall pages on the website. Our ticket source is up to date with all of our events that we're doing box office for. This is potentially going up a little bit because there are other box office services that are not going to be continuing within the town. So we're picking up a few of those, which means when you click through to the events, it just shows you all of the events rather than just kind of the one you're booking. Good. Newsletter is due tomorrow. I've had a few last minute additions that I just need to add in, but it should be going out the end of next week. Again, this is getting a good response for everybody. Pires think it's quite good that I've spoken to because it gives you opportunity to share videos, images and write up all in one section. And obviously it shares all the good things we're doing around the building as well and outside of the building. Facebook engagement's still sat between 10 to 25%. This is our standard kind of target is about 10% at the moment. We've got campaigns scheduled to go out in the, over the next few weeks, just to keep the interest steady. Our poster sites are updated and we're going to start using the A frames a bit more out on the marketplace. Especially with upcoming marketplace events, so that'll be advertised clearly. Our third party groups, community groups at user sense are still distributing our leaflets for us. It's quite a good partnership we've got going on. We had to chat with them about some of the places that they're targeting and just looking at areas that we could also target. So that's positive. New menus will be going out to the tea room soon. Those will be on the A frames out in the marketplace as well as obviously listed on all the social media pages. We just need to finish those off. And obviously flyers and things like that are still available in the bars. They're available in the tea room. And are being distributed, distributed through any business meetups or events that are outside of the venue. If any councillors want to come and pick some up, you are more than welcome to pop into the office at any point and grab them. I bring up the leaflets when we have our three month one, which should be, be updated this month. Packs are welcome if you would like to come and get them. And we're just continuing with our feedback and marketing. We're looking at marketing weddings at the moment. We've got quite a few booked in. But we're also looking at expanding our marketing of wakes and also room hire for private parties and celebrations. Wakes is an ongoing thing. We're currently working one of the funeral directors in town. They will be expanded out into the others. We're just finishing up the final bits of that. And then that'll get rolled out, working with Kerry as well. Tea room hire is up a little bit. We've got baby showers and things that want to come in outside of the opening hours, which is good. And we're getting a lot more, larger groups for afternoon tea bookings, which is handful when you get 26 or 10 people at once, but it's, it's positive to see. And obviously that we've had really good feedback for that as well. Yeah. So any ongoing information posts will be aimed at like the events coming up in the next few months, marketplace event program, which is going to run through a lot of this year. It's a big push. And then obviously many works at the clock tower on the Guildhall. We're looking at make sure we've got posts out about the, you know, the stuff the works team are doing with certain spring summer preparations for the planters across town, all those positive things. You've got your Facebook data there, still positive in all areas. Tea room has dropped a little bit, but we did have a really positive campaign earlier for Valentine's and that got a really good reception and a lot of people from outside of Thetford were commenting on it, sharing it. We had comments like, you know, I didn't know the tea room looked this good. I didn't know this was available. So it was quite nice to see those comments pop it up on Facebook and seeing more people aware of it. So hopefully it increases footfall.
Questions, Brenda?
To our faces, you read it very quickly.
Sorry.
When you, I think that knows what I'm going to say. You said that we are taking on more bookings because a booking office is closing town. What booking office is closed? It's closed or it's closing?
So officially, we haven't been told as council, but unofficially, there's lots of people that are coming to the box office for our events because as you know, we only run a box office for activities and events that are in our venues. There are people that are coming to the box office to say that Leaping Air are closing their box office.
Oh, right.
Now, the pantomime, for instance, in January sold their tickets through their own ticket source platform. And lots of people will do that. And why not? Because it's quite a simple system. We're not, you know, we don't really aggressively go to operate as a box office. We don't really want to do that. Not for activities and events because there's not a massive amount of money in box office commission. So it's just pointless to dedicate staff to do that. We will do our own events if people want to do that with us. So, but the good thing is people come in to buy tickets. And once they're in, then they will see other events. I mean, there was a, there's a guy who's been in every other day to buy more tickets for more events. So that's really good. One thing I would say, Stuart, if you don't mind, is if you were members of the Heritage in Town events, we, we talked about in that committee, all the big events that we've got up and coming for the rest of the year. One of the things that I was, what we're really conscious of in the department is that we've got a couple of continental markets coming. But we really do have to make sure that we, we generate the footfall because they are big hitters. They go to lots of big cities and towns and we want them to certainly come back with their second one in the summer. So we have an underspend in our marketing budget. So we will be taking an advert out in both the About Thetford to, to advertise some of these forthcoming events, but mainly focusing on our Whit Weekend and a World War Two event and things like that. So, because we think that we can actually draw with both of those events, people from outside the town, which is going to be good. One of the other things that we were contacted by as a result of hopefully a future booking in 2024, and I know that's a long way ahead. But the WI magazine has circulation in Norfolk at 12,000. And we are taking out a full page in the WI magazine at a similar time to advertise our tea room. Because we think they're the kind of people that would like to come and visit. And also, so there's four elements when you advertise on a full page. They did this in Kings Lynn, the Kings Lynn Experience, and they came to us and said, do you want to do one on Thetford? Because we know you've got a lot of good history and heritage. So we're going to advertise what we do with the Guildhall and the tea room. We're going to advertise our events. We're going to advertise our town events and also advertise the heritage assets around the town. So, you know, so hopefully these WI groups from around Norfolk might think that it's going to be a good place to visit. And certainly when we've got big events on as well. So there are two areas that we're trying to generate a bigger footfall. And hopefully at next meeting, this is an area, because we will have an underspend. This is an area where we might just try and hopefully buy some of the money over to next year, just to top it up a bit, because I think it's really critical that we do hit everything. Hazel's been doing a great job with the social media, but as we keep getting told, not everybody's on social media. So we've started to get A frames out around the town. But now we need to hit a lot of these magazines, parish magazines and things like that. So we need the money to take out those kind of adverts, if you like. I think we've got a budget that we can do that with. So why not?
Any questions? Can I say something? Forgive me if it doesn't seem to be strictly relevant, but it's to do with our marketing, our meetings. We've got a meeting on the 30th of March.
Yeah.
Which is a public meeting, which is likely to be popular.
Yeah.
Can I ask how, what different methods of marketing have been used for that? So that different generations of people, including elderly, 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 and space folk, how they're going to access, I'm going to find out about it.
Okay. So one of the partners that Hazel was talking about, that's working very closely with us in disseminating some of our information because, you know, they hold their monthly meetings is U38, who have got a big membership and they are of an age group that would probably be quite passionate about some of these topics, certainly the topic that will be part of that public meeting. The guys that were, or the group that were very passionate about getting more information about it, they're obviously going to disseminate it through their sources, but we need everybody to try and promote that. And we are generating free, but we are generating tickets to attend that simply so we can control it. And then we can say to people, look, there is only 300. Once those 300 tickets have gone, you can be part of it through a live streaming of the, of the meeting. And we, we haven't got down to the nuts and bolts of how we're going to control the meeting, but we could take questions from live streamed input. That's something that we need to discuss. But, but yeah, so we are trying to get out to as many groups as possible. Thetford Society is another one, you know, so I think it's an important meeting, simply just to try and get the right information. And I think, I don't think I'm talking out of turn, but I think I understand that Norfolk County Council have agreed to attend. So that's good. So yeah, it's going to happen on the 30th of March.
I'm just concerned because I've probably spent more time talking to people about it than anything I can remember for quite a long time. And most of the people I talk to are connected with, I'm kind of going to say my age group. And a lot of them are not people who were using social media. So they now there's a website, but there's something else as well. That would be very helpful. Otherwise we're going to get, we're not going to get across section of the population there. Brenda?
I think it's going to be very hard for people that are watching it live to actually ask questions. You know, when you think of a running order of a demonstration meeting, because that's really what it is, it'd be very hard. I don't know whether there could be a way that, that questions come in before and perhaps somebody that changes the council or somebody, they could, they could get the questions forward.
I think you, you can ask questions in advance, which would be useful, but sometimes people don't know what's going to be said by the speakers or what subject matters. So you do need to have an option to react to whatever's being said. But I think, you know, we need to, as officers, to think about the best format of, you know, because it may get a situation where you're quite clearly going to have so many questions, you're never going to be able to get through them. But there may be a number of common themes that are coming through that you may be able to say, well, yeah, three people have asked this same, same question. Here's the question.
So I, I think, I think Norfolk County Council, from my understanding, realise the importance of this meeting and they will be sending their communication team down to work with us on the evening to make sure that we facilitate a smooth running and beneficial meeting for everybody. Some of the organisers that were pushing for the meeting or some of the groups that were pushing for the meeting suggested that we have a standing meeting only simply because we could get more people in capacity wise. We've persuaded them not to do that. We have, we're going to have seated accommodation for up to 300 people. Simply because it makes it more manageable. And also for the people who are there, if everybody's seated, you, you stand up as you do at full council, you stand up when you ask a question. So everybody knows who's asking that question because it gets a bit fractious otherwise when you don't know where the voices are coming from. We're going to have people there with roving mites and the people who will be answering those questions hopefully will be on the stage. So again, everybody will see. I think we can facilitate a good, safe meeting. But we will be aided, our staff will be aided by Norfolk County Council on the, on the evening.
This is not our meeting, is it?
It's not our meeting.
I was going to say.
We are, so we do have to take, you know, a little bit, because it's on our premises and, you know, so we have a responsibility to make.
It's just the way that you was talking. I was thinking, well, we ain't.
We have a responsibility to make it safe and, you know.
Do we know who's chairing the meeting?
No, we don't know who's chairing it at the moment, but, but they are sending a group of people down. So that's good.
Jenny?
On that one, for me ideally it'd be Norfolk to stand up and say what they've got to say. And then the questions come from there, what they're talking about. Otherwise you're going to get all these questions and no, and confusion's going to be there. And one question's going to run into another and nobody's going to know what the answers are. So you've got to have like a presentation as such. And you can get the questions asked, asked from, from that presentation.
Yeah, I think it's been, point that is their meeting. So we, we can suggest things. Our main thing is that we're providing a venue that we want to have a safe environment and to control it. But also we need to communicate it, which is the title of our committee here. We provide the venue, but we also communicate whether there is a meeting going on and how people can attend.
Yeah.
It's obviously behind the scenes. I'm sure the town council will find for work with Norfolk in trying to provide a facilitation of a controlled event rather than, because anything that goes wrong will reflect badly upon town council. So we do need to make sure. Carla?
Yeah, I was just going to enforce that. I think it's important. As soon as we have a structure, we actually make it as public as possible. This is how many people can come in. This is how other needs to be able to get secure tickets. This is the structure of the meeting. This is how you can submit a question. Otherwise we'll be running there for hours. We're going to start, it's going to be chaotic. So I think letting people know what the structure is well in advance. So we frame them into that, into that that form. It's fundamental to make sure that the meeting runs smoothly.
And the good thing is that was the point you made on the evening.
I did try.
Yeah, you did. But the thing for us Carla is the fact that Norfolk have been very quick to agree to come. So you have maximum amount of time to try and get that message. Because it's 30th of March, it's not a, not a long way away, isn't it? Something like that.
Jenny?
It's all right. Just mentioned, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Right. So have we got anything else on marketing we need to end Hazel's ear about? Thank you very much Hazel. So 71122, application for free use of venue, which I think you've got the copy of the document.
Yeah, as Mark filled this in then. Yeah, has Mark filled this in then?
Mark has filled the first bit in, which is what he's supposed to do. The second bit, I can tell you um that uh. What we're looking at is something like about a couple of hundred pounds um higher. Uh I believe that we're forfeiting um to support. The Taurus in in actual fact, as I said, with. Mark said, did he want, did he want to come along and I today, and I said, you're you're more than welcome to come along and support it. But, you know, I did say that this committee has looked at, this is not a new event, it's something, I think this is maybe the fourth Taurus. Um and we've supported the previous three. Um. He is only gonna do it once every two years now. Um. And I think the date he's looking for is the eighteen, I forget, eighteen in November, yeah.
Yeah, he hasn't put the price of the ticket, has he?
No. No.
No, the the reason I'm asking that, it's hard to decide um what we would get out if we don't know what the price of the ticket is.
Well, all we do get out of it um in previous uh occasions is the bar income. But I can say it's hugely quite a prestigious event, and there's lots of people there, and we do generate a good bar. Um on all the occasions that we've we've run the Taurus. So it's, from that perspective, it's good for us.
Jenny, what do you think?
I was gonna say, it's 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 not a new event, like David just said, it's something that the council's supported. Mark on, well, the Taurus team on for, what, four years? Five years more than that now. I don't remember the first one. You say you get a generation from the bar, the money's coming into the bar. And it's a good thing, it's recognition of normal people. You know, one day my name might go forward like it has for me, but not. Yeah, no, I support it. I I I all am vote for that. I've got no problems with it. I think it's a good thing for the town.
Yeah. All of you all in favour?
Yeah.
But either proposal second or that's a David one.
I don't mind proposing.
Yeah, propose. Carla second. All in favour? Yes, thank you. Seven one two twenty two, temporary festoon lights over the Red Line outdoor space, Dave.
So we've had a verbal request from um the manager of the Red Line um to. To set up some uh temporary festoon lights, similar to what we do at Christmas, in the two trees that are right next to their outside area. Um and uh the town clerk rightly said that this committee um should be looking as to whether they approve that or not. The what we need to say, and which is what I've said to um to. Uh WeatherSpoons at the Red Line, is that their licence actually runs through to um the end of June this year. So it is a temporary um solution, it is just gonna be hung in the trees. We have got to make sure that the connecting wire across the exit is high enough that we don't impede any. Uh vehicles that we allow on for events and fun affairs and things like that. Um which we obviously will do, and they will comply with, but it, but we do need to, and I need to her to. Be aware that the fact that whatever we do now will fit in and be aligned to their licence, which runs to the end of June. Which brings us to another element of it in terms of um we do need to start opening up uh. Discussions with WeatherSpoons in terms of, they are very keen to extend that. Uh they feel that the the period of the twelve months so far has worked really well for them. Um to be honest, they've been very compliant with the market. On a Saturday, they move their tables and chairs every Friday evening. Put them back out on Saturday evening after the market is closed. So we do need to look at it, but as uh as my discussion with town clerk was that, obviously, this is the election year. Uh there's gonna be a new council i- in May. Um so it may, that element of it may have to be looked at after uh the elections. But whatever you decide today, whether you give permission to. String festoon lights across the trees, we do have to make it that it finishes. Or has to be renegotiated in line with the uh current twelve month licence.
I mean, I think if you took them away, they'd be awful as in town.
It strikes the point.
Two things. First, yeah, I I I mentioned what what they're gaining from this, if anything.
In terms of the festive lights?
Yeah.
I think it's just to make it look a little bit more attractive, and I I mean, I've sat there on one or two occasions. Uh asked certainly after some of our events in the market square and sat in the outside area, and it is, it's a little bit dark, I must admit. What festive lights in trees are gonna add to a great deal of additional light, I'm not sure. Uh um but that's what they're applying for.
Yeah, okay, I'm quite happy with that. And the second point for me is is um. Uh you said, uh when you were saying that, David, uh that. The suggestion was that the new contract would be negotiated by the new council?
Well, it's only because um. It's only because I know, I know what councillors are like in terms of if we bring that to the next meeting, which is in April. There are several councils that might wanna not wanna discuss it simply because sometimes you don't like to make. Decisions which will impact on a future council. I mean, this has been, in some degree, contentious to some people, that we've done this. Um so we do have to have a a full discussion again. And this will be more of a, you know, the next phase, if it's approved. Will be with a lot more conditions in terms of making sure that area complies with our heritage master planning of the marketplace, et cetera, et cetera. So festoon lights are a temporary uh uh solution for lighting, for instance, in the future. If there is an outside space there, they might have to have heritage lights that they might have to agree to pay for. To be in keeping with what we're planning as a town council to improve our market square.
Uh I was really just a bit concerned that we seem to be squeezing into a very small amount of time, quite a significant process. So um I'm not sure if I was the manager of WeatherSpoons, I'd want to be told in late May. But actually, there isn't a contract view in June, so you're finishing. I mean, what to do?
And they are worried about that, Mike.
Well, I think they might be feeling, we would like to have clarity in, say, April, um but I also think it's, you know, we. A new council's got quite a lot of things to do and to learn. And I think they're trying to squeeze an awful lot into a sort of six week period or whatever it is. That that's just an opinion, but I'm I'm surprised we are now thinking of not talking to WeatherSpoons until after the election.
That, sorry, that 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 is, as a councillor, that's your decision, that's not mine. That's, that was just an assumption wrongly, in your view, I agree, Mike, and and I actually do agree. To squeeze that kind of discussion into a month with very new councillors, if that's what's gonna happen in May, who knows? Um it's gonna be difficult and and you may get into the realms of um agreeing a further two month, three month extension. Simply to from, you know, to facilitate those negotiations. But we can certainly put it on the agenda for April.
Yeah, I've got Jenny and Brenda, they're not just summarize.
Yeah, um I I can't see any problem with these lights because it is only temporary.
No.
The lease that's coming up, is that just the one that we sat around and discussed with the marketplace and not the actual lease of the property, is it?
No, it's only the lease of the. No, the the lease of the property goes to twenty thirty.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because when it was coming across as if it was the lease of the whole thing, but it's the lease. Yeah, because I thought that was due up soon. But the the lights, I mean, at the discussion of the lights, it's only for a matter of a couple of months anyway. Before that comes up, so. And sometimes, I mean, you look at pictures of overseas and like these places have different lights and and that to make it a bit. Jazzy or whatever you call it nowadays, I don't know. Yeah, I've got no.
Brenda.
Oh, basically, it's the same as Jenny. I I agree with the light. I would never, I would never. Un- unless something really major was gonna change on that marketplace, I would never ever take WeatherSpoons away from their outside seating. The simple reason, it's, you know, they've got the lights, they go out, they take their children out for a cheap evening meal. Ideal, you know, not everybody can afford to go around the corner to the posh restaurants with their kids that wouldn't eat the food in the first place, so they're wasting money. You know, you've got to look at what people you've got in the town. You walk up the arse, think, you know what, we've been at the party, let's just sit outside WeatherSpoons and have a quick meal, you you know, ideal. But it's getting dust, so you've got these little lights, and and as Jenny said, you see them abroad, you see them when you go to the seaside. They're just, you know, normal lights just to light up that particular area. I think it's it's a it's a great idea.
Chris, did you have anything?
No. So I think it seemed to be that we're we're happy to approve those lights, uh to bring them up to the renewal fee. Lease, or the licence that it is, sorry. Um but I think it seems to be a a wish to at least enter the discussions of what it would look like for a a longer term thing. Um is that something that we so need to talk to them so that we can bring the proposals back what they're after? Or is it something that we should have a meeting about and say, we want to give you a certain period, now go and why and talk to them?
So I think from um this meeting's perspective and to help Karen. Um the decision is to approve the temporary festoon light and uh lighting aligned to um the term of the contract, which ends June twenty twenty three. In addition to that, if that's what councillors want, I think there's an action. For me to contact uh. Um WeatherSpoons and say that we want to open up those negotiations and we should have this as an agenda item in April.
Even if it's just an update.
Even if we start the process.
So that way, you know, we at least could start the ball rolling.
And actually, if it means that there's new councillors in May, at least you've got the information that you can give them. And they're not starting from scratch.
Chris, could could be trying to persuade and put them all the way round with us. Well, that's my point, look.
At one point, I believe that we were looking to do some festoon lighting, David, is that?
We we are, and this is why I said that if if the licence was agreed, there's a lot more conditions into a more permanent licence. Because we are looking at festive lights, but ours are not gonna be drained from trees because it doesn't work on a long term basis. You can see when we do it at Christmas, if you left it there for months and months and months, it drenched and things like. Ours are gonna be from heritage bank posts, and they're gonna be connected, which is what the original idea. But that's part of our master planning, that's part of our ongoing.
That's not imminent, but.
None, no, not for us, no.
I think it might be something that WeatherSpoons might wanna pay into.
They may. Yeah.
Right, thank you for input on to that, and we've got a way forward there. So seven one three twenty two, community engagement, we've already spoke about um advertising, that the meeting on the thirtieth and getting that out there. Anything further we want to talk about? My little favourite is the photo ID for people to vote. Um I know Breckland have started ticking it, trickling it out, I think we need to reinforce that because we will have a large section of the community that may not have a passport or a driving licence. And they, you know, they can apply for a postal vote so that they can engage with the election process. So I know.
Yeah. Do you wanna?
That's part as well.
So I know, I know the town clerk has been uh talking to Hazel as community engagement officer in terms of. Uh highlighting where the wards are and how many councillors we need for each ward, et cetera. So we can, the next phase we can suggest is ensuring people know about the photo ID. Uh and also um what the process will be or what the responsibilities are for uh town council, et cetera, et cetera. So we can certainly do that.
I think, you know, the um timescale of applying for the postal vote, it must be like middle of April type, I think, there's not a lot of time.
Yeah, so I've started sharing it on our um social media pages off the back of Breckland and about the chat that they're involved.
Mike, you want to?
That was the very point I was gonna make, I'm I'm quite concerned about that. I I I think uh I think they say six weeks to, but I'm not sure if it's gonna be kept to that because if there was a sudden splurge. It would probably slow down, so there's gonna be a quite a significant time beyond which you cannot vote in May with a postal vote you apply for in March. But I mean, it could be that. It could be that effectively it'll be closed off well before the end of March.
I think it was middle of April and the the date that I saw um they were talking about.
So normally they send them out about three weeks before election day, don't they, the postal votes?
Oh, yeah.
And then you have to turn them around quickly to get them back.
Yeah, we could, yeah. Chris?
Is it not true that you can take your postal, your postal vote form to the election?
Well, you can, yeah, but you've already had to apply for that to get them all.
Yeah.
So it's getting on their system as a postal voter, uh is the main thing, so that, you know, can.
I like that, that's a priority.
I think so, I think it's just, yeah, try and get everybody. Anything else on community engagement? No? Seven one four twenty two, committee officers update, David. Can I just ask where we are in terms of the towers and scaffolding?
So it's the towers, uh unfortunately, the scaffolding has taken uh turn for worse. Um we now have another meeting with the same people that came several weeks back because um. A new design went in, uh the structural engineer is not happy with it, he doesn't think the uh load bearing um aspects of that design. Um is up to spec. Um so we're calling everybody into a meeting, which will be Friday week. Um to reassess uh what the design, the new design was and what the issues are. Um if it means that we go back to a bigger um scaffolding, it's gonna be very, very costly. Um this is a, it's, it's a bit of a minefield, really. Um. I think the structural engineer is a bit behind the curve, if you ask my opinion, because one of his comments was the scaffold is not high enough. Um I think he's still, he's still um thinking in terms of the realms that we're gonna do, um the structural repairs on site, and it's not. We can't have this with structure any higher because we need to get the crane in to take the, take the thing off. So but so anyway, we've we've got a meeting scheduled now for all parties Friday week, so hopefully we can bottom it out once and for all.
So just on that, whatever type of scaffolding is put up, may I ask, bearing in mind the comment we had about weddings and that. We look to do a decent screening job on the, at least on the lower level of it, so people's photos are not impacted. I went to Blenheim Palace at the weekend and they've got a temporary staircase, which was perfect, but they've used the block brickwork um along the edges of it. And that does blend in and gives a little bit more less.
So have you seen the design, Stuart?
No.
So if 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 all parties get sort of, you know, calmed down a little bit and they go with this latest design. The design will only be, uh the scaffolding will only be up for five weeks. But what it, but actually, in terms of the um market elevation. It is from the entrance pillar virtually to the end of the gable end, so all of that tea room, bottom windows. And above um to the gallery would be scaffolded. Which, if you've got a wedding, it's not gonna be the greatest. So what we are looking into is to have that um first floor level, the tea room, if you like. To have a big um banner hoarding, which will do exactly what you've said, it will replicate the brickwork, it will replicate the arched windows. And we think that that length would work quite well in the future to drape across, because it will be that sort of um. It'd be the 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 kind of material that allows the wind to go through, but it stops the the. So we could drape it across the ga- uh across the gap between the shambles and the tea room when we have big events. And then we have a stage in front of it, so we can use it and make it look quite nice. But we are very conscious about, we've got a few weddings coming up um fairly soon, and it's not gonna be great if it's scaffolded. So we we we, yeah, we've got a a plan in place.
Uh and dare I ask about um electric pillar feed?
So the electric pillar feed feeds, to my knowledge, they've not said any different, is next Tuesday. And I hope it is next Tuesday because there's been a lot of angst to try and arrange these market stalls. That are along the Gildor street side to actually move. And I said it's taken us a long time to get these electrics in, you're gonna have to work with us. So we've we've got a compromise, but if they tell me that they're not coming. It's gonna be. So it's a difficult, it's a difficult day because it is market day, but we've worked around it because we're so desperate to get it in. But um fourteenth of March is the plan.
Thank you. Right, is there anything further then? Thank you all for your attendance and all those who've participated. Thank you.
Want these back, David? Yeah.
Yes.